Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Kay to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderloos.
President.
Merringa.
President.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
VanderWaal.
Here.
Mayor Moss.
Before I forget, Mayor Moss is on vacation, traveling. Is there a motion to excuse Steve from the meeting tonight?
So moved.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, so tonight for the invocation, Councilmember Nordhook will be given the invocation. So for those of you that would wish, we invite you to join and stand for that, and then we'll call that with a pledge of allegiance.
Alright, let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we wrap up our summer with all of its leisure and fun, we ask your blessings upon students and teachers and families as we return to the routines of school and work. In the midst of our busyness, we ask that we would turn our eyes to you and towards service of one another. We also ask that you might provide your blessings and protection upon all those who work in our community to provide us with the high quality of life that we enjoy. Our police officers, firefighters, utility workers, department heads, and volunteers. Finally, as this council deliberates tonight, provide us with the wisdom to align our actions with your will. Fill our hearts with civility and a devotion to the good of those residents who we are fortunate to serve. We pray this and all things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Justin. Appreciate that. So you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, please say no. And you also have the minutes from August 12th, which was just a short two weeks ago. You guys had a chance to look those over. Any additions, corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 12th?
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? Alright, presentation of the bills. It looks like this may be the last time we're doing old fiscal and new fiscal?
Yes.
At times. So, yeah, looking at 2324, give us a rundown, Griffin, of what you have for us tonight.
Sure, start with the old fiscal year. As you mentioned, this is going to be the last time that we're bringing old fiscal year and new fiscal year bills. Before you all, we'll be closing the books and going into our audit process, so you'll just be seeing the new or the existing fiscal year bills moving forward. When it comes to old fiscal year bills, I really only have one to highlight at this time, which is a $6,000 payment to The Right Place. This is our annual contribution for Economic Development Services and Support. I'll actually be meeting with them for the first time later this week, so just wanted to point that one out to you. Other than that, it's a relatively small amount in the old fiscal year and the amount of just shy of $21,000, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there's, if there are any about the old fiscal year bills.
Thank you. Any questions about old fiscal year bills for Griffin? If not, is there a motion to approve old fiscal year bills in the amount of $20,776.88?
So moved.
Motion and support. Alright, if there's no other questions, Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderloos.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes. Great. Moving forward into the new fiscal year, 2024-2025, reasonably hefty amount. Give us a rundown if you have anything special to note there, Griffin.
Sure, thank you. Yep, a little bit more of a normal amount after a couple meetings with a pretty high number. When it comes to this one, I'll start with a couple in that pre-written check category in the just over 128,000. Really, the only ones I have to note there are kind of the average utility-type payments. So, payment to Consumers Energy in the amount of just over $86,000. That's our electric usage. A payment to the city of Granville, so that's to, for our water and service usage over the last month. That's in the amount of just shy of $35,000. And then moving on to the regular checks you all have in your packet, a few that I can highlight, start with Franklin Howard, excuse me, Howard Company in the amount of just shy of $50,000. That is a payment on the Clean Water Plant Aeration Blower project that has been ongoing. A payment to the Hamlet Environmental Technologies Company in the amount of just shy of $14,000. That's for the new pond mixers that you all just approved at the meeting two weeks ago. We also have then several payments to the Todd Wenzel Buick Chevrolet dealership. These were for various vehicle purchases that were approved at the July 22nd meeting. Other than that, we'll just highlight that this is a pretty well-dispersed amount when it comes to the different funds we make payments out of. About 25% of that total coming from the general fund, about $30,000 from clean water plant operations, and about 35% from the motor pool. I do have all of the bills like normal in front of me. If there are any questions about anything specific, I'm happy to get into those in more detail, but otherwise, those are the ones I have to highlight today.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Griffin on any of the bills for the new fiscal year? Thank you for that detailed list there. Alright, if there's no questions, if there is a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $752,914.13?
So moved.
Support, motion and support. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderloos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes.
Alright, moving along. Public comments. Not a lot public here, but if anybody has comment to make, feel free to come on up, tell us your name, your address, you know the drill. No? Alright. Alright, moving along. Ordinances and resolutions. We have zoning ordinance to introduce and table childcare and daycare definitions that you have a memo on about, it's come to the planning commission. Griffin, you want to walk us through that just briefly?
Happy to. Relatively straightforward proposed ordinance amendment before you all this evening. So on August 7th, the planning commission voted to recommend a zoning ordinance amendment regarding the maximum capacity of home daycares in Granville. This would bring our local ordinance back into consistency with state law. As some of you may or may not be aware, the state changed their definitions not too long ago. My understanding is it was to create a little more flexibility to address some of the childcare needs in the state. So the packet that you all have includes a redline version showing the relatively minor proposed changes. The action we would be looking for this evening would be to introduce the proposed ordinance amendment and then table consideration for the next meeting on September 9th. If there are any questions, getting kind of more into the detail of the proposed ordinance, Chris Corey from McKenna will be present at that September 9th meeting.
Great, thanks. Carolyn, you're the chair of the planning commission. Anything you would like to add?
No, just that it does bring us into compliance with state law, which got changed just late last year. And petitioner requested it because she wants to increase the number.
Alright, so we do have a local business that's looking to follow those guidelines and improve the size of her business, okay. Pretty straightforward. Any other questions for Carolyn or Griffin or? No? Alright, so is there a motion to introduce zoning ordinance 24-008 regarding childcare and daycare definitions?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? And now the second part is to table until September 9th. Is there a motion to table that zoning ordinance?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed, please say no. Great. We'll look forward to seeing that on September 9th. The second thing on our ordinances and resolutions is resolution number 3352, collaboration for indigent defense services. Something we've done in the past for years, but Griffin, why don't you walk us through what this looks like?
Sure, thank you. So my understanding is that the transition of indigent defense services from individual local units of government to Kent County has been an ongoing conversation or ongoing discussion for some time. The proposed contract in front of you would formalize this, and there is a memo in your packet from the city attorney for the city of Wyoming that has really been coordinating this effort on behalf of those court service providing municipalities here for some time. So I'm happy to get into that in more detail if you all are interested, but I'll just stop there for now and say that we do have attorney Matt Zimmerman with us today, who is also prepared to discuss the request in more detail if there are questions. But really, what we're looking for at this time is if there's an understanding of this amongst the city council, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution, which in effect would adopt the proposed contract that would allow us to continue to provide the service in partnership with these other municipalities, but it would really be led and coordinated by Kent County. We're not expecting any service level change. It's really just a matter of who the city of Granville is providing its financial contribution to.
Sounds good. Matt, anything to add?
Nope, very good summary by Griffin and the amounts under the contract are guaranteed not to go up. So, city will pay what it's paid since at least 2013. And the county would hope that the services are actually going to increase with their new in-house public defender, but you'll be satisfying your obligation under that 2013 legislation that requires local units to provide indigent defense.
Okay, sounds good, thanks. Any questions for Griffin or Matt on this? No? Okay. If there's no other additional questions, we are looking for a resolution number 3352 for collaboration on the indigent defense services. Is there a motion to that resolution?
So moved.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Kay, would you call the roll on that one, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderloos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes.
Alright, down to consent agenda. We have a number of things on here. We have reports from EMS fire from July, investment report from July, minutes from the Environmental Sustainability Committee from July 9th, downtown development authority meeting minutes from August 8th, and a few miscellaneous purchase orders, some from buildings, furniture and electrical service, and a few from the motor pool. I do know that there was something maybe to note about the two Western Star plow trucks. Griffin, you want to just briefly explain that?
Sure, I'm happy to. And if there are more questions, I'll defer to the Department of Public Works. But as you all likely saw from the memo in your packet, we are requesting to purchase two plow trucks at this time. One of them is included in the current year adopted budget, and one of them is planned for next year's adopted budget. The reason we're requesting to place the order for two of them at this time has to do with the timeline of actually receiving those trucks. So, we would not anticipate needing to pay for more than the one that was budgeted this fiscal year in this fiscal year, but it would allow us to receive that second truck early on next fiscal year.
So that's some great forward thinking, Charlie. I know it takes a while to get those trucks, so.
It's also saving between $40,000, $50,000 a truck because of 27 emissions kick in.
Very good. Well said, thank you. Any questions on the consent agenda from council or any questions for any other department heads or staff? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Gelderloos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes. Alright, down to the city manager's report already. Griffin, take us through a couple of the authorizations you have for us tonight.
Sure, thank you. Well, it's good to see everyone this evening. Got a couple different authorizations to bring before you all. We're gonna start with another change order regarding the fire department, the fire station project. This one, you'll see a memo in your packet from Chief May detailing the request to add the removal and replacement of some caulking to the scope of work for this project. The proposed cost is just shy of $17,000, and that funding is available to be moved from another place in the currently adopted budget. This is another one very similar to two weeks ago where it's work we knew needed to happen. We just originally anticipated doing it separately from the ongoing project, but because there are already contractors on site who provide that work, it's an example of one that we really can just benefit from the cost savings of not needing to mobilize a contractor another time. This time, it's actually kind of anticipated to save us quite a bit of money. I believe we originally budgeted $75,000 to do this work, and we're thinking we're going to be able to do it for under 20. So, it would be our recommendation to move forward with this change order with the idea of no additional funding is being requested. It's just moving funding from one part of the budget to allocate it towards this project at this time.
Yeah, it's nice that the local contractor is willing to provide those services as well, so that's good. Any questions about the change order at the fire department? Chief, anything you want to add about that? I mean, it's awesome to see progress keep moving over there.
It's finally turning green again, huh?
Yeah. Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to authorize the change order in the fire department caulking?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderloos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes.
Next up?
Next up we have for you is a request to authorize moving forward with the upgrades of the traffic signal at the Prairie and Wilson intersection. It's my understanding that this has been a topic of conversation for quite some time, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Charlie if you don't mind talking through the request.
Yes, I want you to report and tell me what we're gonna have to do with the upgrade. I'm trying to report. We met up there with strain electric and granic signal doesn't work on them, and we're gonna put in a box fan type of a system. There'll be audible crosswalks and lights also, also audible, people will hear them. The crosswalk areas will be the big white blocks you see, so it'll stand out. My intention there is to use, you can set all your rear rather than just a lot of more, so it'll stay there longer and, you know, stay white longer. We've already moved the line over by the fire department, so you don't have that double anymore. Keep the fence to the right. Put a big X in front of the fire department door, because you can get one under cards and stop. Doing the improvements that the study is said to do, and I'm asking to have permission to do this, there'll also be on each left turn signal light at each direction, and it'll be no turn on red when pedestrian's across walk in each direction also. So we're trying to do the best we can to save the residents. I think this is gonna help quite a bit. I'm asking for the authorization to proceed with this. Nothing's gonna be done yet this fall because schools are already started and they don't wanna be, you know, they're chipping up. Any questions I can answer?
Any questions for Charlie or Griffin on this?
The only thing I can add to that, if it's helpful, is this was a project that was included in this fiscal year's budget. I believe we budgeted $250,000.
Two thousand dollars were coming in under budget.
Yep, absolutely. So, great job to the public works team for that.
Jeff?
So you said this would include a left, dedicated left turn signal? Is it in all directions or just north-south?
All directions.
At all times of the day or just certain peak hours?
Yeah, so what it'll be is, it'll be set up that if there's nobody in the left turn lane to turn left going east to west, so the signal will actually shut off the left turn in more so, it'll be programmed that way, and it won't stay ringing at all a long time. If there's nobody there for a certain long time, it shuts down, allows traffic to go straight.
So it's kind of adaptable based on some sensors that are in?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, yeah. So, I mean, that was one of the things I said, was that, I mean, the left, dedicated left turn would definitely be helpful, particularly at peak hours. Not sure if it's always needed at all the other hours, but it sounds like you've addressed that thing with the setup, so that's good, thank you. And there'll be signs as well, it looks like, that will say no turn on red if there's pedestrian.
Right.
Otherwise, you could turn on red if there's no one present in the crosswalk.
Right.
Okay. That was another issue that I brought up, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think they did a great job of covering everything we talked about that night that we got the recommendations and we gave input, so I just want to give a shout out to Charlie and the DPW and anyone else who was involved, because this is gonna be, this is gonna be real good to keep kids safe, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I think this is a classic example, besides the unfortunate accident, but, you know, council listening to public, you know, families, literally children coming up to the podium and speaking about how they want more safety there, and I think that this is a great upgrade to that corner there, and I think it'll be beneficial for everybody. Any other questions? Comments?
No changes to curbs or anything? Curbs and everything stays the same?
Yeah, there's, there might be a couple of curbs out there. I have to set the basis for the strain poles and a couple of corner, so it might be a little destructive, but nothing.
Okay, and you included the picture here of the intersection at Canal and Chicago Drive? That's the, that's the setup?
Yeah, it's kind of a void on the Fox channel.
Okay, so that's a local example there? Okay, thank you.
Alright, if there's no other questions, we're looking for an authorization to improve the traffic signal upgrade at the Prairie Wilson with strain electric and, what was the, granite signal maybe? Yeah, we're looking for, motion for that authorization.
So moved.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Tough group tonight. Kay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderloos.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes.
Griffin, and it looks like Brian's here too. Take us through the Clean Water Plant Lightning Strike repairs.
Sure, I'll give a little background while Brian comes up, but I'm gonna defer to him largely on this, but there was a really detailed memo in your packet that detailed the repairs needed at the Clean Water Plant from the lightning strike in June. That memo was kind of put together to serve two purposes. One, to inform you all of the damage assessment to date, as well as some of the emergency expenses that have been incurred, but that memo was also used to update our insurance provider, who will be a major player in reimbursing the city for the costs of some of these necessary repairs moving forward. So we do have city engineer Brian Henon here, who will go through it with you all in a little bit more detail.
Thanks, Griffin, appreciate it. Yeah, hopefully my memo didn't put you to sleep too bad, it was pretty long, but we were trying to describe everything to the insurance company to make sure that they understood kind of the magnitude of the costs. I think I was up here and right, maybe the next council meeting after this happened, Eric showed the video of the strike hitting the main switch there. So, it seemed pretty evident, but they still had to go through the process, and they did confirm that they felt that it was a lightning strike, and they felt that it was a reimbursable expense to proceed forward. So then they kind of wanted a magnitude of overall cost, so they can understand what they kind of had to put in a bank account for you guys to be able to withdraw from and reimburse yourselves. So, that was kind of the purpose of the memo. We've been working with Pillar Electric on site, as well as the electrical engineers to kind of get an idea of what all needs to be done, and the plant staff has kind of walked through it. There's still some additional testing to be done, but for sure, there's two major components that need to be replaced. The primary switching unit for the CHP, and the unfortunate part about this is with the CHP one being down, it doesn't allow the energy that's being generated from the CHP units to get distributed into the plant, which unfortunately costs you guys some revenue, around $11,000 a month or so. So, again, we tried to justify some expedited equipment with the insurance company to make sure that we could try and get those restored as quickly as possible to help limit their losses as well as your guys' losses on the city end as well. PSU maintenance was the next one. Again, that was one of the mains which, right at the front of the plant that got hit. So, with some of those being estimated at about $510,000 bucks and some wiring in addition to that, there's quite a bit of cost. There's also some additional testing that needs to take place on the order of about $18,000, $19,000 bucks. That's gonna determine whether there's a transformer that just needs to get oil fully replaced in it, or whether the whole transformer needs to get replaced. So that could be anywhere between $50,000 and $300,000, depending on what the magnitude of damage is, and testing the pellet stat where we have to go. So, there's also gonna be obviously some additional engineering and contractor expenses on top of that, as well as we were trying to get reimbursed for some of those lost costs or lost revenue streams from the generated electricity on site, so about $11,000 per month. So, I understand that that might be limited to a maximum, so we'll see what the insurance company says about that. But all said and done, at the bottom of the memo there, you come up with the two numbers that range anywhere between $927,000 to $1.17 million. So, that is our best guess at this time of what the estimated magnitude is that could potentially be incurred and potentially be reimbursed. So, any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I believe you guys are just looking for authorization to continue to expend the funds, knowing that this is not something that you guys budgeted for, but will be reimbursable cost from the insurance company.
Any questions for Brian or the guys from the Clean Water Plant that are here too? Questions for them? How likely is, has the Clean Water Plant ever been struck by lightning before, to your knowledge?
To this extent. We've had some issues with the outfall, but it's more of a indirect strike, and we have moist grass built back by the Grand River, and lost some meters here and there, but nothing like this.
I think it's worth noting on that point too, that there is some lightning strike protection equipment already at the plant, and this still occurred, so it's one of those things that, you know, we can always do more, and I know that's something we're talking to the insurance company about as well, but that's never going to completely eliminate the possibility of something like this happening.
Any other thoughts? Comments? Thanks, Brian. Pretty straightforward. Sounds like there's still some wiggle room with numbers, but the future testing will get us closer to those numbers.
Yeah, my understanding is that as long as we keep a detailed accounting of everything that we've incurred as part of this, then hopefully they'll reimburse all of that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Alright, we're looking for a motion to authorize the Clean Water Plant Lightning Strike repairs in conjunction with the insurance claim. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Kay, when you're ready, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Gelderloos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Mayor Proten VanderWaal.
Yes.
Thanks, Brian, thanks for coming again. Griffin, anything else on the city manager's report?
I do have one more thing to add that kind of came up in between when we issued the packet last Friday and the meeting today, on a much smaller magnitude, but nevertheless, something worth throwing out. We received a mini grant application from the Environmental Sustainability Committee earlier today. They are planning on hosting an event on September 21 and requested $300 to cover the cost of having an animal ambassador join from John Ball Zoo. They originally applied under the mini grant program, but received some input and based on just a reading of the mini grant program, maybe not the right fit for that program. Nevertheless, we do have funding in our budget available to support this request. If there's kind of consensus from the city council that that's something they would like to do. We've done this on things in the past, like I believe last year we provided $100 or $200 for some seeds to one of the tree committees. So again, I just didn't want to make the decision independently because it was submitted as a mini grant application. I'm happy to continue to take it through that process. But otherwise, you know, if there's consensus this evening to just, that we want to support this request, I'm happy to move forward with that $300 request.
Thanks, yeah, I know being the liaison to the Environmental Sustainability Committee, we had talked about this event and how we could bring in some other knowledgeable experts. And we weren't sure, we don't have a budget. We don't want to just ask for a budget midway through. It may be a goal of ours to have a budget in the future, but now is not the time for that conversation. So we got creative and thought we'd apply through this mini grant application. But Josh had a great point today, he emailed about maybe it's not the right fit for it. So thoughts on the $300 for that, for that program?
And I definitely don't mean to put everyone on the spot. I'm happy to bring it back, you know, on an agenda, you know, at the September 9 meeting. That would still give them time. I know their event's not till the 21st. So again, if that's the process you all would like to, I'm happy to do that. Maybe we can get someone from the committee here to speak to it more. But otherwise, I do know they're looking for some kind of guidance because I think they need to put a reservation in with John Ball Zoo here pretty soon. So I'm happy to take it wherever you all want to go, just looking for a little bit of input from the group so I can make sure everyone's comfy.
Some of them.
Yeah, I support, I mean, I think it could come from community development or the special project fund. I just wasn't sure it really fit the spirit of what we intended to do with the grant program with neighbors and stuff in the neighborhoods, so.
Yeah, you're right. And 300 bucks is not a big deal. And they need to book this, I'm sure. So let's go for it.
Yeah, every event that we've had with the speaker series at the library has been well received and tremendous knowledgeable people that come. So thanks for bringing that up, Griffin.
Thank you all.
Yeah, anything else?
No, that's all I have this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Great. Councilmember comments? Paul, we'll start with you tonight.
I have nothing more to add, thanks.
Just, I was out of town that weekend, a couple of weekends ago, but thanks Teresa for, I heard good reports, another good gathering. And did the rain hold off?
Yep.
Yeah? Good job.
A lot of stress though. I just want to make sure you still have a little finger packet making the DPW guys. If you have it, I can't make that kind of stuff up. That team is incredible.
Yeah.
So I may be adding the charge, but we certainly can't do it without them and their support. It's just, yeah.
Well done.
Thank you. Justin?
Yeah, I have the same. I joined the Historical Commission on Saturday and it was just a really wonderful event and I was glad that the rain held off. I accidentally said rain in the meeting prior, so I apologize for that, but it held off. And so thank you to Teresa and DPW and all the volunteers. And it's just a wonderful showcase of what we have here in Granville, so well done.
Josh?
Yeah, so Teresa and I met today with Heather from the Michigan Municipal League to kind of talk about some of the details around our presentation coming up in a few weeks at the convention. So our video is done. I think it was sent out to all of you to kind of take a preview of. And I guess we're going to show it in a couple of weeks or something at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll show it on the September 9 meeting.
So I think Nate did a nice job on that. We have a little bit of detail to work on at the beginning and the end of the presentation, but it's coming together. And again, thanks to Teresa for partnering on that. And she'll actually be joining us up on the island as well, so that'll be fun. But thanks for doing that again and helping put the stuff together for the table and everything. So we got some work to do yet, but it's coming together, so. Also had an opportunity to participate in the Buck Creek cleanup on Saturday. We had great weather, we had a great turnout, lots of people there. Thanks to the Friends of Buck Creek for putting that on and Scott was there as well, saw him there. And lots of people from the community, we had groups from churches, we had lots of kids there. I was there with my son, he had a good time, got a little bit dirty, you know. But we were out working on Indian mounds and I think we picked up like with our, we had a pretty large group. I would say we probably had, I don't know, 40, 40 people or so maybe. We had 70 bags of trash plus in about two hours' time, just on Indian mounds there in kind of the Granville portion between where the kayak launch is and Ivan Rest. And that was like 11 tires, a couple of mattresses. So lots and lots of stuff came out of the flood plain there along the Grand River, along Indian mounds. And I know they got quite a bit of stuff at different locations as well. So just appreciate, you know, the groups like the Friends of Buck Creek that are looking at, you know, keeping our environment clean and our waterways in particular. And it's great to have an opportunity to participate in those things too. So just wanted to highlight that and let them know we appreciate everything they're doing.
Randy?
Yeah, and I also want to say both congrats and thank you to anybody and everybody who was involved with the Vintage Festival. It was a huge success. And I can imagine the anxiety, wondering if the cars are going to show up and all of that. But we got a huge break with the weather and it was just fantastic, so thank you guys.
Yeah, I just had, was going to add to that, the memo from Teresa. I love when you can point out true leadership, when somebody who's in charge of the event takes the time to thank everybody else. So but for us, Teresa, thank you for what you do for this, these events and these gatherings and regardless of the weather. And anybody else who did help out that's not here, obviously thank you for another successful event. Very, very fun. Looking forward to your favorite Fall Fest. Scarecrows, everybody is looking forward to that as well, so that's coming down the pipe. If there's no other comments, I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Motion?
Support.
And support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, yes, all those opposed? Thanks, everybody, have a good night.